All right, I'll call the meeting to order. Fudge of allegiance, please.
Fudge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic on which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, do roll call first.
Yes, we'll do a roll call.
Looks like everybody's here, but just to confirm.
Sure.
Yep, so please say here if you're present. Wendy?
Here.
Kristin?
Here.
David G?
Here.
Annie?
Here.
Tyler?
Here.
Christine?
Here.
Leslie?
Here.
Patricia?
Here.
Rebecca?
Here.
Sean?
Here.
Brian?
Here.
David T?
Here.
Tom?
Present.
Claire might be joining us online, so Diane, if you can just watch for her. She had tennis practice, so. And Ben?
Here.
So Ben and Claire, for everyone, are our new student reps on the board attending our first meeting, so welcome, Ben. All right, so that means tonight, since everybody is here, we'll be doing voting by a show of hands as we go through the motions, so. We haven't done that in quite a while, guys.
So the first item on the agenda since the first meeting of the year is election of board chair, so at this point, I'll be turning the meeting over to Jay, and he will be taking nominations and all that fun stuff.
So again, the process is in your folder, so at this point, I would like to open nominations for board chair. Go ahead, Christine, sorry.
I'd like to nominate Annie for board chair. Sorry to catch you.
So keep in mind, I need a second. Annie, if you'd like to decline, you can also decline.
I'm very grateful for the nomination. I'm gonna decline, though, Christine, but I do appreciate it. Thank you.
I would like to nominate Sean Roderick for board chair.
Second.
Was that you, Rebecca, second? Just making sure. Are there any other nominations? I'm gonna practice wait time here for a little bit. Not seeing anyone else?
I have a question.
Yes?
Is it a requirement that at the very first meeting that we nominate and select a board chair? Or is there time for that to be deferred even by one meeting in order to have further conversation about the role? We have some new members on our team as well, and sort of just talk through? Or are we able to talk through and have that explanation sort of here? Sort of a better understanding of the role of the chair or vice chair?
And this is my understanding that that is not permissible, but that's just my understanding. It could be different, but I've never seen that happen anywhere, so. My understanding is we have to do this tonight.
Okay, but is there able to be an explanation of further about the role of the chair and the vice chair as it relates to the rest and the entirety of the group?
I will, I'm not trying to speak for everyone, but the roles of the chair and vice chair are outlined in policy, I believe. Yeah, we have a policy. I can pull that up if you'd like to review it.
Okay, I looked and found stuff on superintendent and the board as a whole, but less around the individuals.
If you will be patient with me here just a minute, I will see if I can pull up that policy very quickly. Of course, sorry, new computer, and I don't have all the Wi-Fi's yet, so. Stay with me for just a sec. Okay, should do that. There we go. All right. Uh, no. Board officers. Duties of the chair, so if you're able to get online and want to look, the duties of the chair are outlined in policy. I can read it just because I know not everyone has it in front of them, if you'd like me to read it.
Is that okay?
Yep, yeah, I think so. So directly from the policy duties of the chair, "The chair shall preside at all meetings of the board and shall perform other duties as directed by law, main department of education regulations, and by this board. In carrying out these responsibilities, the chair will: A) sign the instruments, acts, and orders necessary to carry out state requirements and the will of the board; B) consult with superintendent in the planning of the board meeting agendas; C) confer with the superintendent on critical matters which may occur between board meetings; D) appoint subcommittees and serve as an ex officio member of all such committees; E) call special meetings of the board as necessary; F) be public spokesperson for the board at all times except as this responsibility is specifically delegated to others; and G) preside at and be responsible for the orderly conduct of all board meetings. As presiding officer at all meetings, the board chair shall: A) call the meeting to order at the appointed time; B) announce the business to come before the board in its proper order; C) enforce the board's policies relating to the order of business and the conduct of meetings; D) recognize persons who desire to speak; E) explain as appropriate what the effect of a motion would be; F) restrict discussions when a motion is before the board; G) answer parliamentary inquiries referring questions of legality to the school board attorney; and H) put motions to a vote and announce the vote results. The chair shall have the right, as other board members have, to offer motions, resolutions, discussion, questions, and vote. And then it goes on to say duties of the vice chair in the absence of the chair. The vice chair shall perform all the duties of the chair. And then it does talk about, just very quickly, duties of the secretary. "The superintendent shall serve as secretary of the board with the right to speak on all questions and offer recommendations. The secretary shall be responsible for ensuring that records are kept of all businesses, business transacted by the board at both regular and appropriately called special meetings, and shall perform such other duties as are ordinarily functions of the office." So that's the official policy.
I appreciate that, Jay. No, it was lengthy, but I appreciate it.
Yeah, of course.
For our open understanding as well, so thank you.
You're very welcome. So at this point, I'm kind of going back to, are there any other nominations?
I nominate Les.
Leslie appreciates David, but I'm gonna decline it, so.
All right, last call for any other nominations. All right, at this point, I'm gonna close nominations, and we do give the nominees an opportunity to address the board, to talk about what they would like to do for the position. So Sean, I will defer to you if you'd like to make a statement.
Yeah, make a quick statement. It was an honor to be the board chair the last year. Look forward to continuing the work of the board. As I've talked about with Jay, if I was to continue to be board chair next meeting, I'd like to, next meeting, I think it's appropriate for me to talk about that, to be a goal-setting meeting for the board, and David's already talked to me about some things he'd like to see, so we'll talk more about that later. You know, next meeting be a workshop at Main School Management. Come and talk about what the roles are for the board. I think that would be helpful. It's always a great reminder for people what the roles are, and the community listening to what the role of the board is, so look forward to working on that and just continuing to be open to folks calling and listening. We may not always agree, but I get a lot of phone calls and emails, and do listen and take it into consideration, so. Thank you.
Thank you, Sean. At this point, we're gonna do a show of hands, so the order I'll go in is who would like to vote yes, no, and then abstain, so just so people are aware. Is everyone ready to vote? All in favor of Sean Roderick as the board chair for the upcoming school year? Please raise your hand. Please keep it up, because we do have to record the votes. All good? Got them all? All right, thank you. Anyone that would like to vote no? And again, keep your hands up, okay? And thank you. And would anyone like to abstain from the vote?
Yeah, I'll abstain.
And Sean did abstain. Good. So Sean is our new, is, will continue, I shouldn't say new, I should say will continue as the board chair going into the next school year. So at this point, I'd like to open nominations for the vice chair position. Are there any nominations? Oh, sorry, go ahead, Christine, I'm sorry.
I'd like to nominate Leslie as vice chair. Second.
Rebecca? Rebecca? Again.
I'll accept that nomination.
Okay. Are there any other nominations for vice chair? Again, I'm gonna practice appropriately.
The nominations? Rebecca?
Second.
And Rebecca, will you accept that nomination? Tyler seconded. Again, any further nominations for vice chair?
Move the nominations list.
And nominations are now closed. Again, we'll offer the both candidates the opportunity to share why they feel they might be the best fit for this position. Leslie, I'll let you go first, because you were the first nominee.
Thank you, Christine, for nominating me. I think Rebecca's done a phenomenal job. I have no problems with what Rebecca's done over the last year. I didn't lobby for the nomination, but I'm happy to accept if that's what folks feel is good for the group, the greater group. So if this is what folks would like, I'm happy to work and continue to work with everybody and work with Jay and Sean, and hopefully we can get traction on the things that have come up through the past year and get some momentum on finding, you know, a better connection as overall and have a better line of communication through and through, and just try to maintain some balance, which is, I know, what everybody has done along the way also, so. For me.
Thank you, Leslie. And Rebecca, I'll turn it over to you next.
Well, thanks for nominating me. I've enjoyed being the vice chair. It's been an experience. I think Sean and I have been a good team, and you know, as Leslie said, I would be happy with Leslie being board chair, board vice chair as well, so you know, whatever the board, the will of the board is, is fine with me.
Thank you very much, Rebecca. So the way that we'll run this vote, because there are two people running, is I will ask first for all in favor of Leslie, and then second, I will ask all in favor of Rebecca, and then I will ask if there's anyone that wishes to abstain after that vote. So, everyone good with that?
Just a quick question. You vote for both people, or you gotta pick?
You gotta pick one, unfortunately. You do have to pick one. Go ahead, Christine.
No, I just want to make a comment about not, I don't think that Rebecca's done a bad job. I don't want you to think that. I just think that some new leadership would be appropriate and more of like different leadership styles. I think you and Sean have been a really good team, just wanting to bring somebody new into that position, somebody who has fresh eyes and is new to the board. I certainly don't mean to offend anybody, and if you remain as vice chair, I think that's great. I don't want anybody to feel weird or, you know, that this is sort of blowing stuff up here. It's all good. I just think that that would be a good move.
Thank you, Christine. All right, everyone, everyone got their vote figured out, so I will go again in the order of the nominations. So all those in favor of Leslie, please raise your hand, or, yes, Leslie, please raise your hand. And again, keep your hands up so that we can record the votes. Christine, David, and Tom. We got them all. Donna? All right, and anyone who would like to vote for Rebecca, please raise your hand at this point. Six. Just make sure we've got them all. And before we announce the results, you good, Donna? Okay. And then is there anyone abstaining from the votes? Both Leslie and Rebecca abstaining, okay. Do we need to check the weights? I know it's five to six, but should we check the weights? What's that? As long as we have the majority, we're all set. So Rebecca will remain as the board chair, or the vice chair, excuse me. Congratulations to both Sean and Rebecca, and Sean, I'm turning the gavel and meeting back over to you.
All right, citizens' comments? If we have any signed up? Ben, do you mind grabbing that note? Diane, is there anyone online? Do you want to have them raise their hand? Okay. All right, nobody online, all right. No, nobody online for, yeah, that's what I meant. Is there additions, adjustments to the agenda by the board or superintendent?
I don't have any today. Whoops, I don't have any today, and I covered up the microphone again.
It's really an adjustment, but as I said, next board meeting will be a workshop meeting, and I think Jay can correct me from wrong, we're gonna have someone here from Main School Management talking about the role of the board, want to talk about goals for the year. So if you have ideas you want to share ahead of time to be thought out, or come prepared for that discussion for next board meeting.
Do we tell people ahead of time?
I don't think you have to, probably, no, but if there's stuff you want information on that could be helpful, you know, it would be helpful if you got us that ahead of time, but be prepared to discuss that, those type of things next board meeting.
Is this similar to the session we had with a wonderful lady last year? Just the whole group wasn't able to catch that day with smaller groups?
Yep.
That was, that was very helpful.
Yes, we can talk about goals for the year for the board and mission statement if we want to change it or come up with a new one or whatever, so put your artistic thinking caps on. All right, so we'll move into celebrations.
So I did ask if the principals, I know you have their board reports from the summer, but I asked the principals to just be prepared to talk about the first couple opening days of school, because it is really kind of a magical time, and there's so many wonderful things that happen on those first couple days that can't be captured, so if that's okay, I'd like to invite up Michelle LaForge first for a quick celebration.
Hi, welcome to the new school year. Am I okay, Diane? Okay. My celebration is a very mundane one, because we've barely gotten started, but it is, you know, on the forefront of our mind, whether it's school or the world, it's attendance. It's showing up and doing the things and participating. Our first day yesterday was ninth graders only and 12th graders, so mandatory for all ninth graders and 12th graders, and we had one person out. And that was true for sickness, and that was true last year as well, but has not always been the case. So it was really pretty incredible to see all of the seniors there, and many of them had signed up to work with the new ninth graders, many of them had signed up to work with the new sixth graders, so they were down here, and then the ones who didn't have a job, they still showed up, and then they took on jobs. They worked with the tech department to get the laptops ready, they worked with the facilities department, we cleaned, we put bulletin boards up. You think Julie Orket can't keep 10 people busy? You'd be crazy, you know, like, we really just, and they were just so, I mean, it's such a good example of why schools need, you know, why we involve choice, why, because these are people who are going to become the people that we buy things from, that we look up to, that we buy tickets to see, you know, and so just having, seeing them really empowered and engaged in that first day was really amazing. And then today, again, just a couple people out, there's something going around, but like two people out. They were all there, and they were all smiling, or if they weren't smiling, they were connecting with a friend, or with a teacher, or going to the health center. We were all there, and it just, the energy is really incredible, because it is a nice microcosm of, you know, of the rest of their lives. Like, this is, you live in a world of people who aren't exactly like you, and you learn from each other. So the only thing I would add is anything Ben wants to add, because he had a totally different view of it than I did. Good days?
Yeah, it was really fun. It was good to, I was a sixth grade helper, so like, you know, it was very, it was cool to just see, you know, younger citizens, the people that I know in high school.
Do you remember being in sixth grade, or?
They were.
But they'll remember you, and that's the thing, yeah. So that's my celebration.
Thank you, Michelle. Principal Saroyes?
So apparently, Michelle and I should have collaborated, because my celebration is attendance. But I'll come up with another one for you too, so I don't bore you off, but I do want to say that today was our first day with our full student body back at school, and we had all but three students in attendance. On our attendance list, we did have seven, but several of them showed up after dentist appointments and other stuff like that, so I consider that being in attendance. So that's just a tremendous celebration. I know there's a lot of work ahead, but we're really focused on improving our efforts to make sure that attendance is improving, and we'll celebrate one day at a time, so today is a big celebration for that. Another thing I would love to celebrate is on day one, without knowing fully, a lot of the kids that we welcomed into our school this year, we decided to hold our first school-wide assembly in the gymnasium. We do not all fit on the bleachers, we're close. Sixth graders, thank goodness, have bodies that can sit on a hardwood floor for about 30 minutes and not be wrecked for a week after. But asking some new teachers afterwards what they thought of that, right? They have not been a part of our community before, have not been a part of our school-wide celebrations like this before, and their feedback was that they were blown away that all the students sat there attentively, clapped appropriately at appropriate times, and did not, I introduced every single staff member individually, so that there's a face with a name for other students, and there was not one boo. Now, I'll tell you, they're not all every student's favorite, right? We all have our favorites, but they were very appropriate, and for sixth, seventh, and eighth graders, I think that is a huge victory, so thank you.
Principal Hartford over at Manchester Elementary School.
Thank you, Abby Hartford, Manchester. I have a really mundane and ordinary celebration to report, but it is a powerful ordinary celebration, and that is the routine, that having veteran teachers, having staff that has just returned. I only have one new teacher, and she's a transfer, so she's not new to our district at all, but we hit the ground, well, like, we left on June 13th, whatever the day was. The teachers knew the routine, they knew the expectations, the students knew the routine, the students knew the expectation. We were able to have by nine o'clock on the first day a all-school meeting, even with our new kindergarten teachers, so. And I, that's so much power in having teachers who really are comfortable in what they're doing and have a routine that actually works. And on the first day, we had 100% attendance and one absent today, so another great start.
Thank you, Abby. Jeanette. Principal Jacobs over at Wayne Elementary School.
Welcome back, everyone. It's really exciting to be here. We've had a wonderful few days, both with teachers during our workshop days and also the past couple of days with kids, has been truly amazing. So my celebration actually includes Mount Vernon Elementary. In education, we talk a lot about collective efficacy, and that's basically teachers' belief in their ability to impact student learning. And Michelle and I have been aligning this year to bring Mount Vernon and Wayne teachers together, because they don't have grade-level partners, per se. So we got our staff together, we did some workshops, some data workshops around Acadiance, one of our benchmark assessments, and having the opportunity to spend that time and get to know, especially Michelle's new staff was wonderful, and we got a lot of great feedback from our teachers, so hopefully you'll be hearing a lot more wonderful things coming out of Wayne and Mount Vernon and our aligned efforts.
Mr. Boston at Reed Field Elementary School.
Oh, good evening, everyone. I just wanted to echo some of the same sentiments my colleague said. The most obvious celebration is having the kids back and the teachers and staff. With that being said, we're really excited that we have something new over at Reed Field, which is a new driveway. It's not tarred, but you know, if you remember from the pandemic, after the pandemic, we had a lot of parents transporting, and I was, the last four years I've been in the road. Didn't get hit, but we're really excited that we have that, that gets the parents off of the road as well, it's a more safer environment. The parents have been fantastic these last two days, being patient, training everybody how to get in and out of that driveway, so that's our celebration.
I can't, I can't speak enough about that driveway.
I went over, I had to go check it out last night after someone at the transfer station.
And Principal Hood from Mount Vernon.
Hello. So I have a couple of celebrations. The first is that we in Mount Vernon have kind of teamed up with the town of Mount Vernon, and they've been gracious enough to put an aftercare program into Mount Vernon Elementary. So we started the ground running right on day one. They have eight students enrolled, with more interested in enrolling, so so far, that's been a success. Thank you to Kathy Jacobs. Second, we have nine new students in Mount Vernon that we welcomed on the first day, so we are bringing in some new students into our family, and that's gone exceptionally well. We're happy to have them. We had one absence on the first day as they were finishing camping, and perfect attendance today.
And we do have one more celebration. I'd like to turn it over to Diane.
This actually is a little bit of a summer celebration, but it definitely impacts the opening of school. We had a pretty ambitious schedule of installing Promethean boards in all of the schools, and so I was able to, my team and Norm, especially Norm Robichaud, I want to give him a big shout-out, because he was fantastic at getting these boards up. We installed 14 Promethean panels in Manchester, nine at Mount Vernon Elementary School, 16 at Reed Field Elementary School, eight at Wayne Elementary School. The middle school had 23 installed, the high school had 30 installed, the central office had one installed, and then the PD and the bus, those little buildings over, also got two installed, one in each of those buildings. And I feel like that was a tremendous effort between Norm, Jeff, myself, and the custodial staff, because they had to sort of like, as we were taking whiteboards down, they were painting around and fixing the walls, and it was a tremendous effort. And to have that done before school actually opens was a huge effort, so I just want to give a doze to the team. Thanks.
I know Steve will talk a little bit, like, he does have a celebration to, but he's gonna wait until he adds a spot on the agenda, and he'll talk about it, so. With that, I'll turn it back over to Sean.
Oh, that is awesome. I was able to drop my son off this morning who sprinted into school and I got schooled by his mother because I didn't get a photo. But he was, he was ready to see his friends. He actually wanted to come yesterday, to be honest, because he loves his friends and he loves school, loves his teachers. So it's great. And also he loved that practice started on the first day of school. Cause the past years it's been the second week, but because we started later. So that was huge for Mr. Saroyes. So anything you can do in the future. All right, moving right along. Is there any questions about any of the reports? All right, I think we're good there. Committees, subcommittees, I think there's a sign-up sheet if you want to change or.
In your packets.
Just want to point those out.
And I don't mean to overstep, Sean, but if you've got them tonight and you want to fill them out before you leave, you can pass them into myself or Donna. That'll just help get everything rolling a little bit quicker. Sean and I will sit and review everything, so.
That's good, go ahead.
I'm just curious about the personnel committee. I see that we don't have any negotiations this year. Is the goal to get through all of the job descriptions that you have?
Yeah, there's no way we'll get through all of the job descriptions, but it is definitely a task that'll take probably two to three years. And actually Karen Smith is actually heading up getting that, the work done to be able to bring it to the board and present to the board. So we're gonna try to do a little bit each time and eventually catch up. But it's probably in all honesty, a two to three-year project by the time we do everything. So this year we're prioritizing, as you'll see, we're prioritizing some. And then we'll get into sports staff and then we will also eventually get into all the stipend positions as well. So it'll, it'll take a while, but.
I thought that was a little aggressive.
Yeah.
Okay, building committee minutes. I don't know if anyone that was there or Jay wanted to just give a quick.
Yep. So there was eight people that had originally signed up, four of them showed up. And we were, there was just a lot of questions around the major school construction application, the angst that's out there. So we had a long kind of discussion about that, but that group is definitely willing to continue meeting, having discussions and help kind of craft a message going forward and then help inform as we move forward with that around those school construction apps. And those were submitted last Thursday, so we beat the deadline by a day, which was great. And we do have the receipt, knowing they got to D O E. And again, I think it was Christine, that was at the meeting when we established or voted for them. I do have a one-pager that kind of explains the whole process that we'll be getting, we'll be getting out shortly. And I will be visiting each of the schools just to discuss with them to alleviate any fears of consolidation or closing schools or anything like that. The big thing is that's not on the agenda right now. There, we're a long way from that and we're just starting the process of having conversations and that will inform what we do. So, so it was good. It was a very good meeting.
All right, perfect. Thanks, Jay. Then there's just notices of when the next meetings are. All right, we'll move into the action items. Approval of minutes of June 12th, 2024 board meeting.
I move, we approve the minutes of June 12th, 2024 board meeting.
Second.
Haven't been moved in second in discussion? Seeing no discussion, call for a vote. All in favor? I think it's unanimous, right? Nope, unanimous. All right, approval of minutes of August 1st, 2024 special board meeting.
I move to approve the minutes of the August 1st, 2024 special board meeting.
Second.
Haven't been moved in second in discussion? Seeing no discussion, call for a vote. All in favor? All right, any opposed? Abstained? All right. Three, yup, three abstained. All right, passes. Approval of minutes of August 15th, 2024 special board meeting.
I move that we approve the meetings of the August 15th, 2024 special board meeting.
Second.
Haven't been moved in second in discussion? Seeing no discussion, call for a vote. All in favor? Okay, opposed? Abstained? Two abstained? All right, passes. Approval of minutes of August 28th, 2024 special board meeting.
I move, we approve minutes of August 28th, 2024 special board meeting.
Second.
Haven't been moved in second in discussion? Seeing no discussion, all those in favor? Okay, opposed? Abstained? One abstention. All right, acceptance of donations.
I move that we accept the donations listed. Second.
Haven't been moved in second in discussion? Seeing no discussion, all in favor? Unanimous? Oh, sorry, I missed it. You don't, you're a parent, I unanimous. I, I just realized. All right. Ratification of teacher resignations accepted during the summer.
I move we ratify the teacher resignations accepted during the summer.
Second.
Haven't been moved in second in any discussion? Seeing no discussion, all in favor? Unanimous? All right. Ratification of teachers hired during the summer.
I move that we ratify teachers chosen during the summer to teach in our schools.
Second.
Haven't been moved in second in discussion? I did go through all the hires and there's some great ones. Actually, my music teacher, when I was in first through fifth grade, is now the elementary music teacher. So I can't wait to swing by. Mr. Boston said I could swing by when she's there to see her. I haven't seen her since she left fifth grade, so I'm excited. I happened to look through and see a music teacher from 91 to 94 in MSAD 74 and I was like, that has to be. So I texted a teacher that still works there and she's like, yup, it's her. Actually had lunch with her not that long ago, so kind of cool. So, kind of cool. All right, all those in favor? Unanimous?
Oh. I abstained.
Oh, abstained, sorry. I thought, I saw your hand. My fault.
One of my, Shayna Pross is a cousin of mine.
Okay, one abstention, I'm sorry. I thought I saw you. Approval of grant submission to NB, Northern Border Regional Commission by Stephen Vos for expanded CDL truck driving range in the amount of $100,000.
So I'm gonna invite, before you make a motion, I am gonna invite Steve up. He's gonna talk a little bit about it and then you guys can then move forward with the motion.
Good evening, everyone. Can you hear me all right?
Yes.
So I want to start off with my celebrations. So we had a really good year last year. We ran CDL truck driving for the very first time here at Marana Cook High School. We had a really great group of students, 13 of them, which I thought was pretty awesome. It shows that there's a really high need for that program here. And then we took them to Herman, to right outside of Bangor, to actually participate in a truck driving competition. And we won first place, our very first time going. So over the summer, I want to share with you the MMTA. This goes out to all the truck driving companies in the States to tell them that, who's the best? We're the best. So have a look through, there's some great photos of the kids and them accepting the trophies and everything else. So I'm gonna hand these out at the end. Enough for everybody. The other thing that I have here is we're really trying hard to attract people back here after the pandemic to enjoy our enrichment activities. We had one of the largest enrichment programs in, of all the adult ed programs in Kennebec County at one time. And then we ran into a little bump called COVID. However, we're really trying to attract people back. We have gotten away from using our brochure. I think it has a big environmental impact. You know, it's a lot of paper. I think most of them go into the trash. So we went with something new this year. Hopefully, a lot of you were seeing these in your mailbox. They went out to every single person with a mailing address in all of our towns. But if you haven't seen them, I have a few just to hand out for you here tonight as well.
And the programs are really good.
Yes, thank you. Thank you, Pat. I appreciate it. We are excited. We're bringing back welding for the first time since the pandemic hit. And so we're pretty excited to have a welding instructor. He's also certified to be able to instruct, to be able to offer a licensure program, which I think would be kind of exciting to talk about maybe at a future time. So let me talk to you a little bit about the NBRC grant. So we have an opportunity to potentially get enough money, about $100,000, to move forward with the construction of a range here at the high school. Now I've talked a little bit about the issues with our current range. We currently share a space down at the bus garage. And during the school year, buses moving in and out, we have to shut down the range when school buses move in and out during the beginning and the end of the day and also during kindergarten runs and those types of things. And it really slows down the number of people that, or the number of hours that we can put in a day. Also during the school year, that we can only use half of the range. So we can only train one person at a time instead of running two vehicles. So having a range that's full-size that would allow us to run two vehicles would obviously double our training capacity, going from offering about three classes a year to four. So that's actually pretty huge. So we really would like to obviously move in that direction eventually. Also during the summer, when those, both of those ranges are available down there, we still have a lot of issues with obviously summer school, people moving in and out. You know, people who work in the district moving in and out of that parking lot. It's, it's a safety thing as well, trying to make sure that when an area where people aren't going to get in any accidents with our vehicle or their vehicle. So the high school lot that we're looking at is, if you've ever been up to the high school, there's a back parking lot that's all gravel for the most part. And the, in the back here, next to the, there's several storage containers up there at this time. That would need to be expanded by, to 200 feet by 200 feet. And if you look at that area, it slopes downhill a lot and it's going to require an immense amount of drainage with culverts and cisterns and stuff. So that's why you're gonna see the cost, which is approximately $100,000. So with this grant, we have to put in a match to that. So the adult ed program, we're putting in 50, where we would be requesting 50. And so the pre-application for that, so there's about nine pages that I've written just to see if I'm actually eligible to even apply for the grant. That goes in Friday. So Friday, I'll have that in and then I'm supposed to know by September 20th whether or not we're accepted. If we are, then I'll need to submit some additional budget details and then we'll know whether we're accepted sometime in middle of October. Any questions at all?
No, it's, I think it's very exciting that you're doing it and it's a valuable, you're adding value to the students. I was at a meeting at KBCC today with some trucking, logging, construction companies. And if a, a new employee has the value of able to drive a truck, it increases their value tremendously to that company. They were saying they're starting out at $55,000. That's the average pay when they average everyone in the month.
Yeah, we used, I met with Nick, who's the director last year at CATC and talked to him and went over to talk to his people that are, or students that are in the electrical program. And we trained eight from, from CATC, so those surrounding schools. So, you know, I try obviously to help out our students, but you know, it's also important to help out all students.
And if they have the CDL, when they apply to KBCC, it moves them to the front of the line. And I met a student, met a grandfather who their grandson at a football game who went through the program here and he told me that story and he was pretty excited.
Yup, that was one of our students last year. And we, you know, we obviously have a priority list. There's a lot of students here that still want it. So you know, we look at seniors, we look at people going into the lineman program just to make sure we're fair and equitable in who we accept. But we've already got four interested this year for our January class, so pretty exciting.
No, it's very exciting.
We will need a formal vote from the board so that Steve can put the grant in. And that's part of the requirements.
Brian?
Yeah, I'm happy to move approval of grant submission to NBRC by Stephen Vos for expanded CDL truck driving range in the amount of $100,000.
Second.
All right, haven't been moved in second in? Is there any further discussion? All right, seeing none, I will call for a vote. All right, all those in favor? Sorry, I'm using the roll call. All right, looks like. Yup, unanimous. So perfect. Approval of Marana Cook SBHC opportunity for funded partnership with Maine Health Center for Tobacco Independence.
I would like to invite our health center director, Sarah Morrell, up who will again explain kind of what you're voting on. So that way, before you make the motion, you kind of have an idea of what, what you're voting on.
Hi, everybody. Did you get information in the board packet related to this?
Yup.
So I don't have much to add to that information. I mean, basically this is a $10,000 grant opportunity to partner with the Center for Tobacco Independence, which is part of like the Maine Health System. And they are kind of the overseer of most of the tobacco and tobacco product prevention activities throughout the state. This is a new opportunity for this school year. I believe they're looking to partner with like 12 to 15 schools across the state to kind of do some like in-person work with students who are identified, who, you know, are looking for help quitting tobacco or stopping vaping. And the program is My Life, My Quit, which is like specific to teens. Like it's focused on teens. It's like a lot of online-based and like app-based. But this is using that in addition to some like one-on-one, kind of like programmed discussions with like a live person in the school. So having a school-based health center is like a useful thing. I think that's part of why, you know, we were asked to apply, you know, to join this kind of cohort for this project. And then additionally, we have the community health worker, who's a non-clinical kind of person who comes to the school a couple of hours a week through Maine General, who works with students totally for free, is funded by Maine General. But she is already trained in a lot of the tobacco cessation programming. So it kind of, it works really nicely for us because she's able to deliver the programming kind of one-on-one under the SBHC umbrella. So we can kind of, you know, keep an eye on things and track it and make sure that everything is kind of aligned with the health center model. And then she'll be the one who's doing the hands-on work with the kids and can refer up to like the nurse practitioner if they need more, you know, kind of involved medical or refer out to like Kennebec Behavioral Health, who comes in to do our counseling if they need more behavioral help. I think it will just kind of really work nicely with the whole team approach and add another layer of care for kids who need help with tobacco and vaping, which we certainly acknowledge is a problem in our school. So, you know, the funds are really at our discretion. I asked several times in several different ways. There's not anything that we're specifically like, you know, required to use those funds for. I mean, they even said, oh, you can like, you know, make snack, like have like a snack party or, you know, like stickers or whatever. But it will be nice because it will help pay for the time if people need to do some of the training. The training's free, but their time obviously would be taken away from their work. And then also we like to have funds available for any students who need additional care. Like, you know, that would be, there would be some sort of financial responsibility on the parent or the student. We like to have funds available to help offset those costs to, you know, take those funds and apply them to any of that kind of medical care that's not covered. Okay. Questions?
Yeah, are there any questions? No, I think, questions? No, I think this is great. I know, fortunately, I know vaping is an issue with young adults. Yeah, I think we're good.
So we do need a board vote?
Yup, we need a motion. Yup, no, no, I agree with the third question, but yeah, we can go along to a motion if someone wants to make one, please.
I move that we approve the Marana Cook School-Based Health Center opportunity for funded partnership with Maine Health Center for Tobacco Independence.
Second.
All right, we moved in second. I think we had discussion, unless anyone has any more. We'll move to a vote. All right, all those in favor? Unanimous? All right. Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Thank you, everyone.